I appreciate you're muted.
Okay, welcome everybody. This is Rishi Kumar and you are on Reality Check with Rishi. And this is our fourth webinar on the topic of small businesses. And we talk on various topics Monday through Friday. And we just wrapped up a political conversation. It is Political Monday, so we talk a little bit about community activism and politics. And we decided that the need of the hour was to provide some information and to get through the confusion that currently exists with this bailout package as it pertains to small businesses. So we had a session last week, actually Thursday, which was our third conversation pertaining to this stimulus package. And we can see that from Thursday to today, there has been quite a bit of shift in terms of what has already happened and transpired. So obviously, there were companies that were actually banks that were processing the loans on Friday. But there was a lot of confusion then that banks were not ready to process the loans. And then Bank of America started processing loans and looks like they processed almost in the PPP loans, they processed almost like $30 billion, which is like 10% of the total amount of money that currently exists in that pool. And then we have Wells Fargo that basically processed about $10 billion and now they have put that to hold because of regulatory issues. And then there are certain credit unions, there are certain banks that haven't even started the process yet. And so there is a bit of urgency, there is a concern because in fact, when I was just Googling, I started Googling something and and interestingly, it filled it up for me, which was SBA loans outstanding remaining or something. So people are very worried that this pool of limited funds is going to be gone very quickly. And that is definitely a concern that I'm hearing from all directions. So things are evolving, you know, when you look at the PPP loan, we had an interest rate of 0.5%. That was increased to 1%. So it went up, not a huge increase, but it did go up. So there are lots of fine print data points that I believe Sanjeev will be talking about today. Then when you look at, for example, the venture capital industry that we have here in Silicon Valley, you know, we were talking about the fact that they would be able to access this PPP category of loans, a portion of which is, as you know, it can be forgiven. But now it has been retracted. So apparently the venture capital industry will not receive that. So there is, you know, it's a state of flux. The ground is shifting beneath us while we are trying to figure out, you know, what we need to do to get our businesses going or keep the folks on the payroll. You know, obviously, when I talk to a lot of the business owners, nobody's interested to get rid of people. I mean, these are people they work with. They are trying to preserve and protect the families of these folks. But at the same time, they are impacted, their revenues are impacted and we are hearing all sorts of stories. So let's get going with this, you know, where we'll dig a little bit deeper in terms of what this program is offering today in comparison to Thursday, you know, how has this shifted? And Sanjeev is very well informed, so we'll drill through the stimulus package. But he's also there to address any tax questions you have or even in terms of what are the other options that currently exist for you. So with that, you know, what I'll do is let's provide Sanjeev the floor and Sanjeev, I believe you have a deck, right? So you can share your deck and let's get that going. Sanjeev? You're muted probably.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, okay. I'm getting used to getting used to this technology. We can account and I'm not a techie person, but I'm getting used to it. Okay, so let me share that one. Let me see and share the screen. Let's see this here. Okay, so today I'm going to talk about a little bit about tax regulations because the main thing that people are trying to get is how to access cash flows. Not only from the loan programs, as Rishi Kumar has rightly pointed out, coming up with new guidelines. Banks are not accepting applications now, Wells Fargo Bank and other banks. And now they have said venture capitalists, people who are in startup business will not be able to access the PP program. But let's talk about a little bit about how to minimize taxes and maximize the cash flows from those taxes. The thing is, we have several sources, resources, we can use those, those things. For example, 2019 tax returns, 2020 tax returns, which we're going to file next year. How to get access, how to use the changes under the CARES Act? And how to use it to the advantage for a business owner? So not only from the loan program that we should access the funds, if you're not able to access it, still we can have, we have a lot of cash. There is a lot of cash available from the tax point of view. So let's look at that provisions of the taxes. Okay, so please note this information that we are presenting today is for general information only. So it does not constitute any tax accounting or financial advice to any person or entity. So this is for just for a general guidance, general knowledge. Any specific questions, you need to refer to your accountants and need to refer to tax professionals and get up to date information relating to your own case. So set up a professional consultation if you want to set up a professional consultation relating to your specific needs. So first thing is about tax filing deadlines. We know that tax filing deadlines have changed. A lot of people have not sure, but I just want to make sure you understand this. Tax filing deadlines have changed from April 15th to July 15th. So if you are a C corporation owner, your deadlines is shifted from April 15th to July 15th. Now, if you are a C corporation owner, but you're not, the deadline is not April 15th. Deadline is some other deadline, some other year, for example fiscal year. If you're a fiscal year client and you're not, your deadline is not on April 15th or some other date. For example, your fiscal year ends on March 31st. Then there's no extension of the three months. Or your fiscal year ends on June 30th, there's no extension of those one month. It is only for those people, those C corporations whose deadline is on April 15th. It has shifted to July 15th. Now, if you need more time, then of course you can file extension. There's a Form 704 we use for C corporation to file extensions for getting extra two months, you can go to October 15th. Now, if you're sole proprietor, now this CARES Act have distinguished between different factors, different things of sole proprietorship. They have called sole proprietor is a self-employed person and there's a 1099 contractor. So sole proprietor, under the definition of CARES Act, is any person having business with payroll. Self-employed person is any person with business but no payroll. And 1099 contractor is a person who's doing consulting work for somebody else. It's just a consultant, a contractor. That's what the 1099 is. The deadline for all those people, we are filing Schedule C. If you're filing Schedule C for sole proprietor slash self-employed slash 1099, the deadline is April 15th. But they have extended that deadline of April 15th to July 15th. Now, that being said, other things have also been extended. So if you are contributing to traditional IRA, which falls on April 15th, you can get additional three months' time to contribute to traditional IRA, lower your taxes. So that three months' time, you can use that money and you can put on July 15th to get deduction for lowering your taxes for 2019. What about SAP IRA? What about defined benefit plan? So all those plans that you have, they are also extended to July 15th. So you have to connect with your financial advisors and see whether you can put money to SAP IRA and you can put money into DB plans and lower your taxes for 2019. So not only 2020, we have to look at it, but we have to look at 2019 also. Now comes to California. For California businesses, the date has been extended to July 15th for income taxes. For people who are having sales tax, sales reduce tax, they are allowing, they are giving a program where you can put, where you can use 50,000 of sales tax liability and spread it over a period of 12 months. You don't have to pay sales tax habit immediately. You can spread it over a period of 12 months. So that's also cash flow available for business owners having sales tax. If you don't have any sales tax, I can understand, but if you have sales tax, they are giving it up to 50,000 of using that money and spreading it over the period of 12 months and it's interest-free, so there's no interest on that one. Now, talking about individual taxes, I just want to bring some factors relating to individual taxes. Why? Because everybody is impacted when it comes to individual tax filing, whether it's S corporation, whether it's LLC, whether it's C corporation. In case of S corporation, you get payroll and also you get profit flowing through the personal taxes. In case of LLCs, you get profit flowing on through the personal taxes. In case of C corporation, you get the salaries flowing to your 1040. In case of sole proprietor, self-employed, 1099 contractors, there's a Schedule C that is always there with 1040. So if your income levels are less than $150,000 meritfully jointed, you're going to get a stimulus payment. We don't call it a stimulus payment, it's being called economic impact payments. So it's not a stimulus payment. So just be aware of that terminology, it's economic impact payments. So if your AGI is less than $150,000, you will get a check of, you will get, I will say, a check. They're going to direct deposit the money in the bank account, which you have listed on 2019 return. If you're not by 2019, they will look at your bank information on 2018. If you don't have the bank information on 2018, the IRS is going to have a website. I used to have, IRS is going to have information on the website where they're going to provide you ways to put your bank information and you can get a direct deposit in your account. Technically, they're saying the money should be there within a period of three weeks. I'm not sure, it's already one week from the date they have told, they have signed us bill. But we have not seen anything yet, but of course, the money will be coming faster in your bank account that way. So you will be getting, in case of merit falling joint, you will be getting an economic impact payment of $2,400, direct deposit in your bank. If you're single and your AGI is less than $75,000, you'll get $1,200. If your income levels exceed that amount, 5% of that amount which exceed that limit, it will be lower. So anything excess, let's say you're merit falling joint and your income is $160,000, so $10,000 extra. 5% of $10,000 will be $500. So instead of getting $2,400, we'll get $1,900 depositing your bank. Now, if you have a kid, the age of the kid is less than 17 years, he or she will get $500 extra. So merit falling joint family with two kids, having income levels less than $150,000, they'll get $2,400 plus $500 and $500. So they will get $3,400 direct deposit in the bank. So that's how the economic impact payments work. Now, question on this comes up a lot, a lot of people do ask this question. What happens to those senior citizens? What happens to those people who don't have income? Do they have to file a return to get this payment? Or it will be based upon social security statement or they have to do something to get those payments? The IRS is very flippy floppy. They are not giving clear instructions on that one. Sometimes it says you need to file a simple return to get the money in. Or they're saying, just hold on, you can look at the social security statement and based on social security statement, they can get the check. My thing is, it's better that you file a return for 2019 to get that money. Remember, this economic impact payment is advanced rebate for 2020 tax return. It's not based upon 20, it's based upon 2019, it's based upon 2018, but still is an advanced payment for 2020 taxes. So even if you don't get this payment, when you file your 2020 return, you'll get a tax credit based upon your income levels. So you not lose this rebate right now. So you still, you can get it if you're getting it, it's good. If you don't get it, you can get it when you file a return. Other thing to remember, this economic impact payment is not income. This is not, will be taxed as income to you. This will be exempted income. Now, what about California? Is it California going to tax it? As of now, California is saying they are not going to tax it, but you know California FTP is a crazy agency. We don't know what they will say at the end. Right now, they are saying we're not going to tax that money that people receive because of this CARES Act, they are not going to tax it. Now, important area of discussion here, what should look into is you can take money out from your retirement account. So one important cash flow is here. So let's say you have 401k balance of half a million dollars. You can take out 100K from that half a million dollar without paying any penalty, without paying any penalty. That has been the beauty of this CARES Act. Earlier, if you take money out, if you are under age 59 and a half, you are supposed to pay penalties and you're supposed to pay taxes. After age 59 and a half, you will take that money out, you are supposed to pay taxes but no penalty. But if you're under, with this CARES Act, if you're under age 59 and a half, you don't have to pay penalty. Of course, you will be paying taxes, but then, under the CARES Act, they're spreading the income over a period of three years. So if you take out $100,000 from your 401k balance of half a million dollars, you spread the $100,000 over a period of three years. So every year, it will be $33,000, something, some change over a period of three years. You declare that $33,000 over a period of three years. So they're spreading the income and you're spreading the taxes over the period of three years. So very important technique for having cash flows for your business. You don't have to just get the loan. This is an important source. You can tap your retirement account. You can take the $100,000 and use that money for payroll, for expansion, for other overheads that you have for business. Now, another provision this was is if you repay that money. So if you get, let's say, one year, two year down the line, your business is growing now, we are all back to normal and you get, you generate enough cash flow and you repay that money. So if 100K we borrowed in year 2020 and I repaid it, let's say I repaid in 2022 tax year, then I have shown half, one-third of the income in 2021 and one-third of income in 2022, but I can amend and go back in 2021 and whatever income I've shown, I will amend it and I will not pay taxes on that income. So excellent strategy. So what it's saying is you can use 100K of that money right now without paying any penalty, without paying any taxes, giving a time of three years to repay that money. And that's a fantastic strategy for accessing cash flow, which is available right now in your account. But we have to have some guidelines on this one. When you go to your 401k plan administrator, they can ask a few things. They have to amend the plan. The date for amending the plan is given until January 1st, 2022. So they can amend the plan and they can allow these withdrawals from determined account. Another good source of taking money out is borrowing money from your 401k. Now, earlier the borrowing was limited to 50% of the balance, up to $50,000. That's the maximum which is allowed under program. Now they are extending 50K to 100K. You can borrow 100K from your 401k plan. So let's say you are a W-2 employee working for a company. You can take out 100K money as a loan amount instead of 50K. And you can use it for any purpose. Or if you're a business owner, if you have solo 401k plan, if you're SAP IRA, you can use that money, you can borrow money against that one. Now SAP IRA, of course, you can take a distribution. This is, borrowing is only from 401k, not for SAP IRAs. So not for any IRAs, only from solo 401k plans or DB plans. Withdrawals can be from IRA and can be from 401k. So that's important. There is a temporary waiver of RMT requirements. People who are over age 70 and a half, they have to do RMDs. 3.12% of their money in their retirement account every year. Now debt has been suspended. That's important waiver for them. They don't have to take the money out and use it. They can avoid, they're giving one-year extension in this case. Now, in case of cash contribution, if you're giving cash contributions, they have increased the deductions from 60% to 100%. So let's say you want to give cash contribution to charities and other things, it's 100%. So let's say you put $10,000 cash to anyone, to a charity organization, you can deduct $10,000 without any bit, up to 100% of AGI. So that's also important here to understand. So few things about individual taxes. They are giving the economic stimulus, economic impact payment. You can borrow money from 401k, you can withdraw money from 401k including IRA. So those are important changes that happen from an individual point of view, which I wanted to bring to all of your attention and you can use it in the vice manner. Now, coming to business taxes, which is an important discussion we have having today. A lot of changes are there in the business taxes for 2020 tax year. First thing is the losses. So let's say in 2020 tax year, you're going to make losses because of virus situation, the pandemic situation and your business is not doing good, anything. 2018, you were doing very good. 2019, you were doing excellent. 2020 is where the bricks were applied and now you're not making that much money. You don't even know what's going to happen in the next six months to one year. So business income will come down drastically and you will have losses in that business. You can use that loss on 2020 tax return and you can use it to go back six, five years. You can go back to five years. So you can go back to 19, you can go up to 18, you can go back to 17, 16, 15. If you go back five years, whichever year you have the highest income on which you paid the taxes the most, you can amend that return and you can get the taxes as a refund. Or you can use a Form 11, we call it a 1042, 1045 form, where you can use that form in the current year 2020 and you can get the refund. Or you can lower your taxes for 2020 or get the refund likewise. So important change about the losses, you can use the loss. Now, let's say you have lost, you don't have loss in 2020, you have loss in 2019. If you're lost in 2019, you can carry back that loss to 2018 if you have good income and good taxes and you can amend 2018 return or you can file 1042. So you can save money on that as well. So important changes here. This loss, this concept was there in 2008 or 2009, 2008 when there was a real estate problems, we have those net operating losses carried backward five years. The same concept happened here, is applied here. What is the important concept for understanding purposes? The other important thing is the losses earlier were allowed to be offset up to 80%. So if you have big losses from S corporation or LLCs, which were flowing to personal, up to 80% of that loss from the S corp and LLCs were allowed to use to offset your income from other sources like your spouse income or your W-2 income or interest income or capital gains. Up to 80%, you can use that loss. Now they have overlooked that 80%, 100% of that loss from the S corporation LLCs can be used to offset your income level. So if you have in 2018, if your losses which are limited, now this 80% was as per the tax cuts and job act, which were implemented since 2018. Because of tax cuts and jobs act, people were not able to deduct 100%, they were only able to deduct 80%. So any year, 2018 or 19, you're not able to deduct the extra 20%. You can go back and amend those returns and get the refund all over your taxes. So again, important change for people who have losses in their corporation, very good for startup companies because they don't have income, they are putting money into their bootstraps, they're looking for cash flows. Excellent resource here for using the losses and to offset or if they start making money in 2020, they can go back and use that losses to offset that income. An important change also for real estate investors. If you are a real estate investor, if you're managing real estate and you have losses from the real estate, what happened is earlier, if you're managing real estate as a single, as sole proprietor, you're owning real estate and managing real estate, the losses from the real estate were not, were allowed only to deduct, were allowed up to the limit of half a million dollar of missed earnings income. Now they are saying that any losses from the real estate can be used to offset everything, everything. From, you can direct everything from the real estate to the personal, to other income like W-2 income, interest income. So everything is taken off. So this is important for people who have commercial investments, big, big investments, which have big losses. So you can wipe out everything from the other side of income. That's what President Trump does. That's what he's doing it and that's why this is perfect for him. That's why he does not end up paying more taxes. So bonanza for real estate, that's what's happened. Again, this has changed here. Now, for employers who are having payroll, for businesses with employees, there's a payroll tax delay. So you can defer social security employer portion of social security tax, 6.2%, not Medicare. You cannot delay the Medicare tax, but you can delay the social security tax. 6.2% of that tax for payroll run between March 27th to December 21st, not before it. The payrolls should be run between March 27th to December 21st. If you, for those payrolls, you can delay the 6.2% of the employer portion of social security tax. And you can pay that deferment 50% by 2021 and 50% by 2022. So two years, in two years, you can pay that 6% which you're holding and deferring and use that 6% for the current income level, for current expansion or just trying to survive in business. So there is a payroll tax delay there. But if you get loan forgiveness under PPP program, if you get the forgiveness under PPP program, then you can't use this delay. So if you're not able to get PPP program loans, that doesn't mean it's end for you. You can do this deferment. So let's say you have payroll costs of $100,000 in a year. 6% of that is $6,000. You can defer 3,000, you can pay 3,000 by 2021 and 3,000 by 2022. So you can use that $6,000. This is only for employees, employers having payroll, less payroll. If you have more payroll, you can see the tax advantage of using that payroll tax delay. But if you have forgiveness under PPP program, then you're not allowed to delay this payroll taxes. Now, what happened with the self-employed sole provider people? They can defer their unemployment taxes. Now, everybody knows that anybody with Schedule C has to pay unemployment tax. There's a 15.3% slab on that income. They can defer their unemployment taxes. They don't have to pay some form of taxes, like meaning to say they don't have to pay the estimated taxes. They can use that deferment or estimate taxes by one year. So that's important change here for sole proprietors. The interest expense deduction has been increased from 30% to, has been increased from 30% to 50%. 30% was done, was limited by tax cuts and jobs act. They have increased it to 50%. And for business, for people who are real estate and/or people who have invested, who are real estate inside the business, for example, building or some kind of a commercial estate where you own that and you run it, you run a business with that commercial estate. Any qualified improvements, if you do any qualified improvement inside the building, when the business is running, if you do anything on those improvements, you can get 100% of those improvement as a deduction, depreciation, deduction against your income. So earlier it was limited to 39 years, you can do 3, 4%, but now they have increased to 100%. So big change for people who have buildings, who own buildings and that building is used as part of running a business. So they are allowing the qualified improvements. It's good for people who have restaurants, people who have hotels. They can use this depreciation 100% and set their other income for that one. They can go back to 2018 and they can amend returns, they can go back to 2019 and amend a return if they have already filed. Now, the important change here for business owners is employee retention credit. Every employer who is paying to employee, they are paying to employee up to $10,000. Not more than that, if they are paying maximum of $10,000 for paid family leave, paid sick leave as per the family first, first family coronavirus leave act. If you're paying under that paid sick leave and paid family leave, if you're paying up to $10,000, then any payment that you're doing, up to $10,000, you will get a credit of 5,000 max against the employment taxes. So that's employee retention refundable credit is there. You can use that credit against employment taxes. How are you going to use it? You have to use it on the 941. The IRS is going to come back and design those forms. We still have not seen it, but it will be there for retention credit as well on 941. Same thing for deferment to employer taxes. We have not seen it as yet on 941, but they said they are already in the, the forms are already in the making and we'll see that on 941. but they said they're going, they are already in the, the, the forms are already in the, in the making and we'll see that on nine forty one uh, as they come by. Important change for business owners is section one thirty nine payments for sole proprietors, uh, self-employed people. So if you have, if your, if your employees are working from home, you need to set up, they need to set up home office, for example, furniture, table, uh, some systems and also, uh, internet and other things. So if you reimburse the employees for setting those home offices, that, that will not be expect income to them, but it will be expense to the employer. We call it a section one thirty nine payments that are applicable to sole proprietors. Uh, this is also important change that happened. So individual tax, there, there are changes affecting the individual taxes, there are changes, uh, changes affecting the business taxes. So these two, if you look at the changes, they generate enough cash flow to, to, uh, uh, take business owners through this phase of uncertainties. Why? Because you can lower your taxes. Tax is a big component of anybody's income. If you take a federal tax and state taxes and also look at payroll tax and so look at sales tax and also look at other taxes, at this forty to fifty percent of your income goes in taxes, that's minimum in California. You can go to sixty percent, as high as sixty percent. So if you plan it properly for, for individual side as well as business side, this year, you can save a lot of taxes and you can go back and make changes in your, uh, tax filings and amend those returns to lower the taxes for and get the refund. So not only the, not only this loans which you are going to talk about, but also this taxes has, is going, is going to give a, is going to give a sufficient cash flow for you as we move forward. Now let's look at the small business loans that everybody is talking about and so much confusion exists on this small business loan. So I want to clarify as many things as possible and also I have an update as to what is going on with respect to P P P programs. So small business loans, we have the first one is economic disaster, economic injury, injury disaster loans known as E I D L. In case of E I D L, the loan is given to cover working capital, not only payroll, but working capital. It can be for, uh, contractor payments, it can be for, uh, like, like any, like expenses relating to supplies, uh, any other materials, buying materials, anything, any working capital needs that you have. Uh, so there is no restriction on the use of those fund. Only thing is they have to be used for working capital. That's what they need. So this has been economic disaster loans were always there. It was meant for people who have, who have disasters in the radio, for example, earthquakes and hurricanes and other things. Now this has become more, become more prominent because we come to know about it. So in this case of economic injury disaster loans, the, the, the interest rate is three point seven five percent to four percent payable over a period of thirty years, is over thirty years. And you can up, you can get loans, you can get, get loans up to, uh, they're saying up to, uh, two million dollars you can get a loan. In P P P program, you can get loans up to ten million. Here you can get loan up to two million per business owner. And payment is deferred over first twelve months. But for applying under this program, you have to go on to S B A website. You have to go to our S U F site and under this, what they have done is they have allowed ten thousand dollars. They're going, they're saying they're going to give that ten thousand dollars in three days' time. I've not seen that money, uh, yet in many clients' accounts. Uh, it's showing that the S B A is getting very slow. Everybody's working from home, even S B is working, people are working from home. So, but let's see, let's say this week or next week, the money of ten thousand dollars will be coming. So they are treating this ten thousand dollars as an advanced payment. So pending the application, application processing is going to take time. It takes time about three weeks to four weeks or more. The S B agent is going to call you guys and, and find out more details about E I D L, uh, application. Now in E I D L application, few things you need. One, you need to have an income statement for twenty nineteen. Why you need income statement? Because you have to put the income set, income at how much my income is there for twenty nineteen? And how much is the cost of goods sold for twenty nineteen? And second thing you need for this E I D L is number of employees as of January thirty first. If you have those information is a very simple process, you have to, uh, fill it, the application is very simple. You have to fill it up and, uh, get it going. You can get ten thousand dollars immediately. Now let's say three weeks later, four weeks later, the S B agents calls you, then that person will go through all the documentation and questions and they will ask questions of, of all the expense and other things. And they will ask you to submit documentation. If they, on, once they approve, once they look at the documentation and if they approve it, you can, you can keep the ten thousand dollars, you can still, uh, it will be, it will, let's say, they approve it for two hundred thousand dollars. You don't have to give any guarantees, any collateral. Loan about twelve, two thousand, two hundred thousand dollars needs guarantees and they will ask for guarantee document and collateral. Loan up to two hundred thousand, they will not, uh, they will not ask for that one. So what happens to, let's say they don't approve those loans. Uh, they are not satisfied with documentation and say you're not, you're not, uh, you, you're not, they don't want to give you any money or they don't think you're the right person. You can still keep that ten thousand dollars. That ten thousand dollars will be treated as a grant, non-taxable. You, so that money is coming as a gift to you. Uh, so that's why I told all my clients to apply under E I D L immediately. So E I D L is, is better set up than P P P program, which is a current program. Uh, with a lot of messed up guidelines, clarity is not there and all those things. But E I D L is a lot of, a lot of clarity is there, has been there since long time. So ten thousand dollars you can get within a week to two weeks immediately. They said three days, if you go to the website to S B A dot gov, they say three days' time. But, uh, like I said, we will not see it, maybe one week, two, two week delay might be there. And you don't have to pay back that ten thousand dollars. Now the current P, uh, P P P program, we call it paycheck protection plan.
Do you have a couple of quick questions, uh, on the E I D L, if I may?
Uh huh.
So, and, and we won't drill down too much right now because we'll go to the Q and A, otherwise we'll be here forever. But the, uh, you know, one is I've heard that the S B A site, it's not very robust, it keeps crashing. And there's been a lot of issues with that. So my question is, are there any alternate options to go out and apply for these loans? That's one. And secondly, the, uh, the question is, looks like E I D L is applicable for companies that have physical assets and it makes it easier for them to qualify themselves as part of E I D L. What about services companies, you know, that are intensive with, uh, having like contractors or, or even staffers that, you know, service revenue is what their business model is. So any, any thoughts on that, on these two questions?
Yes, so E I D L is meant for everybody. As like for every, even for service, service companies, they can file it under E I D L because you are in a disaster area. California has been declared a disaster area, so definitely you can apply under C I D L. Uh, E I D L is only through S B A dot gov website. It's not going to, it's not to any lenders, approved lenders or anybody's. Unfortunately, you have to go to S B A dot gov and apply there. Uh, like I said earlier, earlier it was easy, I did for myself. Uh, it was easy doing that. Uh, there was not many, uh, people there out there. Uh, I, uh, you can try your luck again, but that's the only website you have to use. You can go to only S P A dot gov, whatever.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, so, so loud, this P P P program is known as paycheck protection program. Now, this, this program has been changed consistently. Their guidelines have been changing. Now, the S B, the, the department treasury is saying something. The banks are saying something. If you look at the loan application, uh, the things are different. If you look at the guidelines, what the, uh, treasury is saying, what the, uh, Treasury Secretary wants to do is separate. So both are, things are conflicting each other. Uh, but we have to do the right way. So what is the right way? I will go through that, what is the right way for doing the plan, the, the loan application? So the ultimate aim under P P P is to get the money and to forego that money. You get the money, use that money for payroll and then we don't have to pay it back. That's how the plan, that's what the plan is. That's why people are so, wants to take this money. Uh, let's, let's, I will, I will, I, I will make sure that I will use it in a, I will make sure that you understand this clearly. So that when you use this program, you use it in the right manner. So it's meant for small businesses with less than five hundred employees, less than five hundred employees can, can go under paycheck P P P plan. Uh, in case of people having restaurants, they have, they have made it that five hundred or less employees can be par location. They, they, they are waving a lot of things for us, people having restaurants. They're waving a lot of restrictions for people having hotel businesses because those two businesses, as per them, is, they have suffered a lot. So they're trying to give a lot of benefits again for those two businesses. Now affiliation rules are applicable. What are affiliation loans, rules? We have to understand affiliation, affiliation rules. Affiliation rules are based on common ownership and common management. Means, let's say A B C is a company. Uh, and X Y Z is another company. Now, A B C company holding more than fifty percent ownership of X Y Z company. So there's a common ownership, uh, they have to apply only for one company, either A B C or X Y Z, can't apply both. Now, A B C is at one company and X Y Z another company. A B C does not own forty percent, right, or more than forty percent of X Y Z, but A B C management controls the operations of X Y Z. So that means there's a management control, uh, again, only one company can apply, not more than companies can apply. If you apply both the companies, if you, if you, if common ownership, common, uh, management, if you apply that, the, the loan will be disapproved, they will not consider the application. So just be careful on the affiliation rules, common ownership, common management rules. So apply only with that company which has the highest payroll. Don't apply both the company with payroll, so only with this company which has the highest payroll. So those, in case I feel, in case affiliation rules. Now, lo, in this program, loan up to ten million is calculated, is, is loan up to ten million is there for each business. So there's a big amount, bigger amount than E I D L, where loan is only up to two billion. Yet the loan amount is up, is up to ten million per business. Now, how this loan, how this loan amount is calculated? This is a calculator based upon three factors. One factor is if you are a business in operation in twenty nineteen. Second factor is if your, if your business is not in operation twenty nineteen, uh, is not in operation up to June twenty nineteen, but is in operation after June, uh, twenty nineteen. Means I need any date after July twenty nineteen. And third, what about those businesses which has not, not started or which have started, but they are seasonal employers? So the rules are, the calculations are based upon payroll in all these three, uh, different types of businesses. In case of running business in twenty nineteen, it's based upon, uh, the, the formula is based up, is average monthly payroll incurred prior to loan date times two point five times. In case of business not present twenty nineteen, but in twenty nineteen, they're looking at after July, not full year, after July, anytime. So in that case, is average monthly payroll incurred between January and February twenty twenty times two point five for seasonal employees, for seasonal employer, it is two point five into, uh, average total monthly payroll for twelve weeks. They can choose the period, February fifteen, twenty nineteen and and ending June thirty, twenty nineteen. So they're looking at, the P P program is based purely on payroll. So there's no, uh, contractor payments upon the payroll. Now, the guidelines as per S B A, as per the department treasury to loan debt, means if the loan, if you applied for a loan in April and you have to go back twelve months. So that, that means three months of the current year, January, February and March and nine months of the last year. That's what the intent was there of the, uh, of the guidelines. But to simplify the things, what is happening is the banks are asking for twelve months of twenty nineteen and also three months of twenty twenty, uh, data. Payroll data, uh, this payroll, payroll cost, how to calculate that one? So yeah. Look at, don't take twenty twenty, love, there's a line two which says wages, salaries and tips, so use deadline, use that now amount on that line two of nine forty one, forty quarter. Deadline two is a glass salaries for all the employees. You don't have the employee contribution in employee contribution to it. Timer plan, if you have a timer plan for your employee loss. So let's say you're an employee who makes hundred twenty thousand dollars. You can only include hundred thousand of that compensation. Extra twenty thousand dollars will not be added, will not be, uh, added here. It will be deducted, the excess amount will be deducted from the computation. And you have to add the employer payments of of, and it can be insurance benefit paid by the employer to the employee. So that, so that will give you, so again, of nine forty one, add the employee contribution to retirement, deduct compass for, for the time and it is divided by twelve, will give you average monthly payroll. And that average monthly payroll, we have to multiply by two point five times, the, the preview that, uh, uh, that amount is just estimated amount which as per application the lender should go for it. Uh, that's the maximum one the lender should go, lender will look at all your documentation. They're asking for nine forty one to be attached, they're asking for payroll, uh, and they also compute the current three, one quarter of payroll cost, payroll. For January, February and March twenty twenty, you be ready with the nine forty ones and nine forty, nine forty ones basically. Because the lender can ask you for the stock. This program is one percent. Earlier it was point five percent, uh, they increase it to one percent. Why? Because the lenders, the bank increase from point five percent. Earlier the lenders were saying increase it to four percent and now they say no, so they are that one percent of that one. That's why these banks, the bigger banks, they don't want to service these loans. The reason is the margins are very thin, margin are very thin for them. Uh, demand is huge, among us demand for that one. Uh, and the guidelines are not clear. Oh. Uh, and the term of this loan is two years and you don't need to pay for six months. So there's deferment of payment. Now in case of E I D L, there's a payment deferment, deferment is one year. In case here it is six months, you don't have to pay for six months, we include, uh, there's no guarantee fees. So it's not a good
Quite, quite a bit and, uh,
Can you hear?
Yeah, I, I don't know what's going on.
Can you hear me now?
Are you using a laptop as your device or you're using a cellphone for your?
I'm using laptop, laptop.
So, so let's keep going. I don't think so. We have a choice, but, um, sometimes the packets come in altogether, you know, so keep going. Sorry about that.
Yeah, yeah. So maximum interest rate is one percent and the term is two years with payment deferment for six months, for six months with interest and deferment. There's no collateral, no prepayment penalties, no credit elsewhere, no guarantee fees. That's why the bank, for the bank, they don't, it's not making too much money. It's a lot of headaches, but not, uh, great money for the banks. Of course, they're getting commission, but not, that is not enough. They can do other loans like lines of credit and other things where they can get higher interest rate and, uh, they can get better deals. That's why all the bigger banks like Wells Fargo and Chase Bank and, uh, they are just, they're not out there helping the clients, helping the clients. Uh, the loan will be serviced by S B approved lenders on commission basis, like I said. Now in P P P program, there is a self-certification required. See, what they are doing on the application is they are not asking too many details, but they are asking you to initialize all the conditions on that P P P program application. So you're certifying that, that, that there's a current uncertain economic times that makes a loan necessary to support your organization and funds will be used to keep employees. You're promising that you're going to use the fund to keep employees and make the payroll, rent, mortgage payments and utility payments. And you're also certifying that application has applicant has no other application pending under CARES Act, not under E I D L. That means you can still apply under E I D L and you can apply under this program. You don't have to worry. Of course, it's not that you can get both the loans. You have to roll it over, one loan will be rolled over, the E I D L loan will be rolled over into P P P programs. That's how it's going to work out. Now, if you have business with contractor payments, so a lot of people have confusion on the contractor payments, that confusion existed because the guidelines says is based on payroll, purely payroll. But when you receive the application for deal from the lenders, But when you receive the application for deal from the lenders, you see the contractor payments. They are saying. Payment paid to contractors. That wording is creating a lot of confusion. If you have a contractors. You cannot tell you apply under E I D L. They can themselves have their own, they can apply under, they can apply under PPP. In that case, they can apply on their own in PPP. That application is starting April tenth, it's going to start this Friday. Now, if you're a contractor, if you're, if you're ten ninety nine and sell by person with no payroll, you should apply on PPP program. On this application, on, starting from April tenth. That's how it's going to work. For, for them, for small business, for sole provider with, with employees, the application was April third, not tenth. Now, the update on the PPP, Bank of America received applications for, like, they have received from one hundred twenty two thousand applicants. For about twenty six billion dollars by Saturday. Wells Fargo has already stopped taking applications since they have already received the application for ten billions, ten billion dollars. Once you apply with bank. So what, where should we apply? You should apply with the bank with you, with whom you have borrowing relationship. You have lines of, lines of credit, you have other, other relationship with the bank. The banks, what they're doing is they're only giving, they're only accepting applications for existing customers. They're not accepting, they are accepting application for others, but that will be, that will not be even considered. It's such a huge demand. So where, what will happen to those people who don't have any banking relationship? Or they're banking with those people, with those banks, which are not S P approved. And they're not doing any, anything else. Where they should go, they should, well, they're out of luck for them. There's nothing there. Right now, in the guidelines, where they can go and apply somewhere. Of course, you can apply as a, as a non customer. But like I said, it's very, it's not very high chance that you'll get the loan. Now, I'm hearing certain other things that they're going to extend it. They are going to increase the budget, increase the three hundred forty nine billion dollars that has been given for this program. But I'm not very sure how that is true, how much is true. Let's go for what we can do right now. This program is there. If you're not applied. So in, in case of Wells Fargo, what they're saying is they have collected the application. They have some questions, they ask some questions on the, if you have, if you have answered those question. By Sunday, they're, they're going to send the application, they're going to send up the application form for all of them. If you applied, if you answered those question on Monday, they are not going to accept it. They already shut, shut down the system by Sunday morning. Same thing with Chase, same thing with other banks. But if you have a smaller banks, go with, if you have smaller bank account. They are doing it much faster and much better. So if you're, if you're one of those people who are left out. You can connect with me later on and I can see what we can, what I can do. I have connection with some other banks, smaller banks, credit unions. Where they say they're still accepting applications. So if you're those people who are, want to, wants to know more about it, you can connect with me, I can take it. I can talk to them, I can give you the information and you can take it from there. What documents you need for filing this application? The driver license, you need driver license front and back. The nine forty ones for four quarters of, for twenty nineteen, one nine forty for twenty nineteen. And you need a payroll register as on and around February fifteen twenty twenty. This is what they, they need. So you should need, you should keep these things ready when you apply, or when you do the application. Don't get confused with other things. Now, the most important thing on PPP is loan forgiveness. Getting the money, but then making sure you're not making, you're not going to pay that back that money, that loan. So how, what are the conditions they look into for, for giving the loan? So forgiving the loan, loan forgive, loan will be forgiven if you use that money. Within eight weeks from the loan origination date on the following items. One, the payroll cost. So you should be paying, you should continue paying your employees. Now, if you're paying to any employee more than hundred thousand dollars, then the excess amount will not be considered for loan forgiveness. So, but if you're paying less than hundred thousand, continue paying the employees. Now. You can also run payroll for yourself, you can payroll for this house, but you have to make sure that you run that payroll consistently, not only for eight weeks. Interest on mortgage obligations incurred in the ordinary course of business. So mortgage obligation means, doesn't mean that you're taking, you're paying HELOC loan on your primary homes, not allowed. It is only for more. Ordinary course of a business. That means, and it should exist, that, that debt should exist as on February fifteen twenty twenty. Rent should be existing rent, rent, not a new rent. It should be existing as on April, as on February fifteen twenty twenty. So that rent, if you pay those rent, yes. What happens if you're, if you're not paying rent or you're. Working with your landlord and if this landlord says, okay, pay me after two months, three months. And you cut the check, but don't make the payment, then that, that amount is, will not be considered. Because they are looking at certain documentation, like check should clear the bank, they will look at bank statements. We'll talk about that in the other slides, but that's what they're looking for. Rents, payments on utilities. And it, utilities does not mean, a lot of people ask this question, what about payments made to dice dot com or other, other vendors? No, only for utilities. That's what electricity, gas, water, transportation, telephone or internet in place before February fifteen twenty twenty. Few things that you should consider. This is going to come eight weeks later. You have to be, you have to consider this few things now. So that when you get the loan, you should have those things in your mind. Number of full-time employees should be, should be consistent, means they will, when you apply for loan forgiveness. They're going to look at the number of employees you have in the covered period, means eight weeks. In the covered, there's a covered period, covered period is from February fifteen to June thirtieth twenty twenty. So in that covered period, if you have consistent employee number and they compare it with the employee number in last year. If you have the same, same employee number, then there will be no reduction in the loan forgiveness. If you have lower employee number as compared to prior year, it will be reduced. So, for example, in, in prior year, you have twenty five, this year you have twenty. So that means you're, you're less by five, number five employee, five number employee. Five number employment, you're twenty percent lower than last year. So your loan forgiveness will be reduced by twenty percent. So the number of full-time employees is important calculation. The payroll cost should not be, let's say, you have, you're running payroll, but then you're saying to employees, hey, I don't, can't pay you the full salary. I want to reduce your salary. If you reduce their personal salary by more than twenty five percent, up to twenty five percent is fine. But if you reduce the salary by more than twenty five percent, the extra percentage that you reduce will be reducing the loan forgiveness. So let's say, you're running payroll for employee who makes hundred thousand a year. And this video said, I cannot offer to pay you five. Like, it takes two months. So if you're paying sixteen thousand, you say, let me reduce your salary by thirty percent instead of paying hundred thousand. Mortgage only for paying payroll, rent, utilities and mortgage payments if used in ordinary course of business. So you should have the fund, number of employees and the payroll should not be decreased by more than twenty five percent. If you do this math properly, then if you get, if you're lucky to get the money, you will not be paying taxes. And you'll not be paying any money back to the, to the, to the lender. So lender will be, lender has to take the decision within sixty days from a date of request. Now, what happens if you hire this, hire back these people? Let's say today you're suffering, but when business starts moving around and you want to hire them back. If you hire these people back by June thirtieth twenty twenty, then no loan, there will be no reduction in loan forgiveness. That condition also is there. The lender will be asking to provide documentation like payroll records. Checks, receipts, accounts transcript and other documents to verify expenses and certify statement that the representations are true. These things they will ask, you should be ready for those things. So maybe you may talk to your C P S, the accountants to get those things ready. A lot of C P S are not knowledgeable in this area. They're not even taking interest into this. So if you are, you need to educate those people. To get those things right, because loan forgiveness is a big thing, is a big thing happening. And lenders will decide with respect to forgiveness within sixty days. And loan forgiveness will not be considered taxable income to borrower. And even if, if, if the loan is not forgiven, if you don't, if you don't get the forgiveness, you can still pay that loan. Between period of two years, rate of interest only one percent, very cheap loan. So, and you can utilize that loan. Utilize that fund and use other, other provisions like payroll tax, deferment of payroll taxes, taking the employer, employee retention credit. Instead of getting loan forgiveness, you can use those provisions, which will, which will be much better for you than, than loan forgiveness. If you are a, if you're a company with high payroll, in that case, forgiveness will not work better. Only this, maybe they're taking a loan and, and paying that loan back with employer defaults of payroll taxes and employee retention credit will help you more. With that, that one. Also remember this, in this stimulus, in this CARES Act. About hundred fifty billion dollars have been given to IRS first time in so many years. They're getting some money from the government. And to start like coming back on their feet. I, I know a lot of agents, IRS agents, they come to my offices and. I know how, they were feeling so bad, they don't even have proper chair to sit, other things. Now they have some budget from the government. So they will be doing an oversight. So if you recall in early years, when there was foreclosure and cancellation of debt, there was a ten ninety nine statement comes as a cancellation of debt income. So there will be. As from my understanding, there will be some document the lender will provide at the end of the year, where it will show that how much loan was forgiven. So, a diarist will be looking at those things, there will be oversight by diarist on those things, whether you've claimed it properly or not. And what situation was there, whether expensive or regular, not regular. So when you, when you pay to your spouse or when you pay to your kids. From the fund that you use it, make sure that you do consistently and reasonably, and they should be qualified for those, for those one. Now, which program is you do use? You should use E I D L or, or PPP. What are differences? So E I D L is meant for any business owners, including homeowners and renters. PPP is not for homeowners, PPP is not for renters. So only for. It's only for, in case of E I D L, loan forgiveness is given up to ten thousand dollars. Well, PPP is based on issues of fund. The loan forgiveness under PPP is based on issues of funds for salaries, rents, utilities and mortgage payments. Eight from the date of origin nation, then documentation are required for reverse for lenders. E I D funds are used for any working capital needs, whereas PPP are only used for those purposes. There's no collateral, personal guarantees for PPP, but they are collateral personal guarantees in case of. If you get the E I D L funds more than two hundred K, less than two hundred K, there's some, there's at the same level as, as PPP program. E I D L is based on credit score, whereas PPP is based on payroll reports and documentation and documentation. Interest rate in E I D L is three point seven five, fixed for thirty years with first installment due after one year, with interest accrued on a deferment. Whereas PPP interest is fixed at one percent, payable in two years, with first installment due at least six months, with interest secured deferment period. So, just, so they're, both loans are important loans. PPP programs, people have jumped into thirty million small business are there, they are, it's a very small loan of three hundred fifty billion, maybe they will come. Or with more funds, whether they're going to come with additional funds. But it's better for you to apply under both. So if you get the E I D L, you can apply under E I D L on S P A dot gov. Get the ten thousand dollars, which is not, which is not, the trading is advanced, which is not it as a income. And you can, you don't have to pay it back if your loan is not approved. But you have to look at total picture, also just both the loans are important and not one. I don't want to go to unemployment, but there are provisions for employment here, it's very detailed. It can take another half an hour to, to understand. This unemployment provisions. The California, you can look for California state, the California state small business loan guarantee program, they are those business owners. The link is S T T, S T T P S slash, slash, I bank dot C A dot gov. Make note of the website. So if you don't get. Any loans from federal, if you don't qualify under PPP or don't qualify, got anything under E I D L, you can use the state programs are there, which are available. So with that, let's take some questions.
Yes. Thank you, Sanjeev, for, for a very comprehensive presentation today, just like Thursday. We really appreciate you taking the time. So we did have a question from Robin, who, which was sent over during the R S V P process. So why don't we start with Robin? Robin, if you can please unmute yourself and ask the question about PPP and, and, and the employees. Go ahead.
Okay, so actually I'm, you may have answered part of it, but a large portion. Okay, a large portion of our employees are ten ninety nine employees. And we've, we've actually already been able to get in our application for PPP. We included our ten ninety nines when we were figuring out our payroll from the last year. And some of these employees have also started the process for applying for unemployment. So one, I'm, I'm wondering, did we make the mistake by including them in our application for figuring out our loan amount for the PPP? And then also, if we are going to be able to pay them from money that we get, what happens to the unemployment that they've been applying for?
Hi, Sanjeev.
He might be frozen.
Sanjeev, we are not able to hear you, so. Hopefully you, you got the question, Sanjeev. Oh, let's check if we did lose Sanjeev.
I don't see him now.
Let me give him a quick call and see what's going on. Oh.
He looks like he's back.
He's back, yes. Sanjeev, you are.
I'm back, I'm back here.
Yes, yes.
So I was answering about, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I was answering about the first one, definitely there's a mistake done on application regarding the second question, answer to the second question about ten ninety nines. Unemployment of ten ninety nines. The federal has not yet started giving unemployment. Unemployment checks to the tenant and contractors, but they have to register with the state E D D. And if they already register with state E D D, they have to back that application out and use it under PPP program. If they, because if they qualify for PPP, it's much better than taking unemployment.
Okay, I missed the first, the answer to the first part of the question. So I'm assuming we should not have included the ten ninety nines in our payroll?
Yes, we should not have included the ten ninety on the payroll, because like I said, the intent of the program was meant only for payroll. Failure purpose, not for paying contractors, like there's a conflict on commission on the, the application guideline. And the intent of the program guidelines. We should go with the program guidelines. So if, if you're lucky, the bankers will, will call, will call you for, for asking questions or. Ask your bankers. If you're not lucky, that can be, this can be not approved.
So let's go to the next question and in the interest of time, we'll try to see how we can get through quickly. Because it was a working day, folks might want to. So the next question is from G, but I'll let me. The question is if you apply for E I D L, but don't check the ten K advance, can you change after the fact? Can you modify the application? Hi, Sanjeev. So we will have another session on Wednesday evening at six thirty P M. So, you know, feel free to come back as well and we can have a deeper conversation on these topics. And sounds like Sanjeev is having some network issues. Sanjeev, my suggestion is to use your cell phone and to dial into the Zoom call using your cell phone and do not use the Wi-Fi option. And that might be the way to. Okay. So let's see what happened with Sanjeev, did he have to? Yep, Sanjeev is there, Sanjeev. Okay, I'm pretty sure it's network issues that Sanjeev is hitting. And so six thirty PM on Wednesday, can you all hear me, can you all hear me? Hello? Okay, Sanjeev is connecting to audio now. And yes, okay, so Kathleen is saying yes, so six thirty PM on Wednesday is our next webinar. And it's the same dial in information, the same Zoom link. So if you would like to join in on on Wednesday at six thirty. And we have numbers guru will be there on Wednesday and we can, we can continue to have a very similar conversation. So so please feel free to come back, Sanjeev, you're back.
Internet issue is coming, I'm back, sorry for this one.
Go ahead, my suggestion is if you drop again, then you use the cell phone to connect into the Zoom call. And make sure you enable Wi-Fi because that will be a much more robust. And I'm going to text you the Zoom call on your cell phone, so you can just click on that and join it in case you drop off. But let's go. I'm not sure, so the question was, can you modify your EIDL application, someone forgot to check the ten K advance?
Yes, so you can, like I said, the answer to that question, you can go ahead and do another application under EIDL. So there's no going back on the. Application, there's no way you can modify, but you can go ahead and file another new one, new application.
Okay, good, and then we had an update from Samir, Samir Tuma, and he basically said that the new EIDL site is no longer crashing. So some of the folks on the that have joined via phone may not see the chat. So for them, the new EIDL site is no longer crashing and let's go to Marla. Marla, would you like to unmute yourself and?
So the, you answered, I think, the question I had on the ten ninety nine, but the question I had on the EIDL, when I tried to do the application online. We're business and it was essentially asking for the whole cap table and all the personal information relative to all the people that were on the cap table. And I couldn't find a way to get around that and that seems, I mean, very. Very, very onerous and very intrusive. So is, do you have to provide that, how does, how does that work?
No, so even if you don't provide that, the information is fine, you can just submit the application with the information that you have.
It doesn't let people pass on the site, it will not let me get passed to the next point if I leave that part blank.
You just say, you say, you should just say non-applicable, any, and then.
Didn't work, I tried that.
There's no other way. Unfortunately, you have to find, you have to write something there, non-applicable, something to make it work.
No, it required, it actually required that I have to put in everybody's birthdate, their social security number.
So that's very confusing on that application. Maybe you can just try to avoid some questions on that one that leads to that answer to those questions, maybe try.
I tried.
Try, so then then try under PPP if you have employees.
We have ten ninety nines.
When this program open for contracted contractor payment not for payroll, so that you can try only pretend under PPP.
We can't go under PPP, we have ten ninety nine.
Yes, but your sole, your sole provider read ten ninety nines.
No, we're C corp, we're C corp.
Oh, C corp. Yeah, C. It's the way I cannot give any answer on because EIDL, if you're not able to go through that questions, then this, that initial. Application has to be sent somehow, you can try to calling at sba.gov number if they can connect you via phone and find out is there any way they can.
Okay.
You can get, get through that question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next question is from Samir and. You know, Samir is, Samir, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes. Great, Samir.
I was trying to look for, I had asked several different questions on the show, I was just to the lady was just on, I was curious when she was trying to do that EIDL application. I started and did an old one and it did ask all that information, but when I redid them. It was much more. Ask all that information.
Okay, I was trying that early this, before noon today.
Your application should, your application should be easy, not tough.
I was very tired, Samir, when when did you do yours, maybe there's another link to another application.
Yeah, you.
I did mine last Monday and it was a new application and those applications took less than twenty minutes.
Ten minutes.
Very streamlined.
It's a streamlined application, I think. You should use a streamlined application.
Streamlined application?
Yeah.
Try streamline?
Yes, it takes like ten minutes.
Yeah, it seemed like it would be very fast, it's just it was asking all the personal information for everybody that was on your cap table.
Yeah, Rishi, I think the rest of my questions have, I think, have been answered.
Yeah, there was a question of Samir, is there a way to figure out how much you will receive under?
Yes, yeah, that was, that was a question, thank you very much for reminding me of that one. Because it, everything that I read, all the regs saying it's unclear as to what, how much you'll receive. I know it's based on what your demonstrable losses are, but I couldn't see anything that would give you a formula or any idea really what the amount would be.
So you're asking the question about the the payroll.
The EIDL.
The loan amount, how much will be loan amount?
I know.
Yeah, the maximum they're not going, is based upon, is the initial application, is not. The.
So, so Sanjeev, you you are breaking up quite a bit. And my suggestion is to use your.
Will be, it is going to call back. So let me use the phone, yes, yes, let me use the phone.
Make sure you turn off Wi-Fi and then just use the Zoom link and join in and I think it'll be much better.
Okay, I'll do that.
Okay, let's give Sanjeev a minute to to join us back and. Let's go to Jamal, can partners in general partnership with no W twos. So would you like to unmute yourself and?
Yeah, it's basically.
Once again, let's.
I hold on, okay.
Let's have Sanjeev back on the call. Not yet. Don't see Sanjeev yet.
Rishi, thank you for arranging, I'm gonna drop off, thanks very much.
Thanks for joining, thanks for joining Samir. And we can go a little longer if you're all okay with that. Sorry, my apologies on the glitches we have had today, this is very unlike, we have never seen that before, so I don't know what's going on. And let's see. Nope. Let me see if I got a text from. Okay, he just got in. So. Let's see. Can you hear us, Sanjeev? Maybe Sanjeev is dialed in using the phone option. Okay, he can hear, good, so Sanjeev is, but we can't hear you, Sanjeev, so that's a problem.
Yeah.
So Sanjeev, can you please unmute yourself and say something? Hi, Sanjeev. Okay. It, okay, let's text, Sanjeev, if you use the Zoom link. On the phone, then you should be able to. Hear as well, hear us as well. I don't know what's going on, you perhaps click the dial by phone option. But we are not able to hear you, Sanjeev. So Sanjeev, you probably want to drop that and. Click on the Zoom link in my text message to you. And see if you can join us back. The very first link that you have in my text message, click on that.
Sorry guys, can you hear me now, I'm back?
Good.
Sorry, thank you for, thank you for having patience. Going back and forth.
It's much better though, okay, Jamal, let's, let's hear it.
Okay, this is a case of a general partnership and the partners are the only one working in the restaurant business. Can we apply, I already applied, but can we apply for PPP using the K one numbers for two thousand eighteen or two thousand nineteen?
So you are a partner applying under PPP, what about partnership, is it applying under PPP or no? Is applying.
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the partnership applying, yes.
Yes, partnership can apply under PPP if they are employees, as long as they have employees on the PPP application, if you look at the PPP application on the top of the application, it asks, it gives you. What type of entity you are, as a C corp, S corp, LLC, partnership, you check that box.
Yeah, but the numbers to to calculate the the loan. Should, are they going to be based on the K one numbers because there are no W twos?
No, no, no.
Okay.
You, it's not, it's based on, if you're multiple, if you're multiple partnership, partners in that partnership, if you don't have employees, you should not apply in the PPP. It's better you apply under EIDL.
Yeah, we applied on the EIDL, but I thought it's, we could apply on the PP.
No, PP. No, PPP is, you can't. Based upon payroll.
Even if you're going to hire new employees once the. The pandemic is over, hopefully.
But. I've covered the.
Yeah, I didn't hear you, but.
Yeah, can you answer again, Sanjeev, Sanjeev?
Yeah, it is based on the. For the price, it is based on the payroll for employees that before you apply for it. So it's not, it's not for future employment, it's based on the data for prior employment. But payment for the future employees. And regular employees.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to Ashwin. And they apparently Chase Bank said they couldn't include the twenty twenty payroll amount, they only ask for twenty nineteen.
Yes.
That's okay?
Yes, yes, they are asking a lot of people. That's okay, that's okay, it's based upon twenty nineteen, we should use for twenty nineteen later.
Okay, good, let's go to.
But we want to include their twenty twenty if we are higher payroll, but we cannot include that, correct?
Right. Should not include, so I would say to get the maximum out of PPP program, just follow the guidelines the banks are asking. Because they are the people who are servicing the loan and they will, they will submit the application to SBA. But what the banks are asking, just follow those guidelines.
Okay. Okay, let's go to Usha. Usha, you still on? A lot of the folks have dropped off.
Hi, Sanjeev, this is Usha here, I had a question. That can, can partners in an LLC with employees, can they put in their K one numbers for the PPP?
Yeah, like same thing answered with that one, if you have LLC with employees, yes, you can put that, you can have them LLC apply under PPP program.
But for the employees, not for the partners which get K one.
The part LLC is applying, right, LLC will be the person, LLC will be the entity applying, so that not for the partners, not only LLC will apply.
The LLC will apply for the employees.
Yes, the LLC will apply under PPP and the data they will be going to use is a payroll. For employees.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So next question, you know, this was a quick comment from somebody that from Gene. Well, Wells Fargo stopped taking applications and they are using Lendio, who contacts many lenders, so L E N D I O. So in case you are trying to submit something through Wells Fargo, you can try Lendio, L E N D I O. And let's go to Malini, Malini is still on? I think it doesn't look like Malini is on, Malini has dropped off. And if I only have ten ninety nine, is it better to go with EIDL than the PPP?
Well, ten ninety nine, I will, I will suggest, if you have EIDL is better, if you have ten ninety nine, go under EIDL.
Okay.
Don't go under PPP, yes.
Okay, good, and so Ramesh is asking, can we take EIDL and PPP if we have S corp only owner and spouses employees?
Yes, yes, definitely, hundred one percent, so there are no distinction, distinction between. Type of employees, between the owner employee or other employees. So if you are owner shareholder, husband, wife and running payroll, you should apply under both.
Okay, you're good with that, Ramesh?
Oh, yeah, even if you are on the annual payroll also, is that?
Yes, so, so very good question, so let me answer this question properly, so if you're, if you're running one. So, so very good question. So let me answer this question properly. So if you're, if you're running one payroll for the whole year, that's okay for when you apply. But when you get that money from PPP, make sure that you consistently run payroll. Not only for that, for that eight weeks, but you keep on running payroll till the end of the year. Because you have to understand when you, when you apply, when you file the return next year and like IRS is going to oversight, do the oversight on that one, you want to make sure that it's not just, just running payroll for yourself. You're running it consistently as a business owner, business map and doing it properly over the, over month to month period. Okay?
Okay.
Thanks, Sanjeev.
Great. Let's go to Neeni. Is Neeni around? Yes, Neeni is on. Neeni, I unmuted you, so you can speak your question.
Yes, if I only have 1099 and want to apply for PPP, are they going to take my 2019 household income or are they just going to look at my 1099 number?
Can you repeat that question one more time? Some sound was there. I was not able to hear that question properly. Can you, can you repeat it?
Yeah, just wondering if I have, I only have 1099 and want to apply for PPP. Are they going to take my 2019 household income with my husband or just me as a sole proprietor? And do I fill up the?
So when you apply.
And do I fill up the?
No, when you do the application, the PPP, you do it on April 10th. Don't do it right now. For the contractors, the, the application is open on April 10th. So when you do that application, you have to include your schedule C income, not your other income from your husband. Only schedule C will be the basis for 20, reporting under PPP for 2019 tax year.
Okay. And since I'm the sole proprietor without employee, I just put my legal net, right?
Yes. Yes.
And what about my income?
I would suggest to you that even if you don't have employees, it's better you apply for a year number. It's important for privacy purposes, confidential purposes. There's nothing wrong in getting the year and EIN. But if you don't have EIN number, is you can apply under responsible number.
On the social security number. But I don't have.
You don't have no payroll. That's what I'm saying. For payroll, if you have payroll, the application date is third April. If you don't have payroll, you can, this Friday, that application will be over.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't have payroll, so I use my, my social security number or my.
Yes, yes, yes.
Hey, hey, Sanjeev. This is, this is Neeni's husband. Thanks for doing this. I really appreciate this. So now the fact that my wife Neeni, she doesn't have any employee. Now, when we, when she fills out that form for PPP, what does she put in as the, for the payroll amount?
No, no payroll amount, just put her net employment income. So whatever, look at your schedule C for 2019 tax. Have you already done 2019 return? Have you ever, have you filed that 2019?
No, not yet.
Did you file 2019 tax? Not yet. Look at 2018 tax return.
Okay.
Not yet. So do you have, or you have an idea of your income expense for him, for her? Income, how much is income? How much is expenses?
Right, right. Yes.
So whatever the net profit, the whatever is the net, whatever is the net profit, that property should put it there.
Oh, I see. So her income, her revenue will be, will be going to the payroll section. As if she's, she's the only employee, correct?
The net, the, yeah, net profit, yes. She's the only employee, yes.
I see, got it. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go to Ashwin. Ashwin, you have a payroll cost and forgiveness question? Ashwin, you still there?
Yeah, just, I think he has answered most of the questions. Just a quick one is that when, if, if you get the loan and to consider for forgiveness, can we use that amount to pay 1099? So it's only for paying to employees?
Only for employees, rent, utilities and mortgage payment, no payment to contractors allowed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to pretty much the end of the questions. Love to see if folks on the phone would like to unmute yourself and ask your question. Because you missed out, you couldn't put it in the chat window. So there are still a few people on the phone.
Hello, this is, my name is Bill. And I have a question regarding employees that make over $100,000, okay? Because we're, because we're small consulting company, almost all of my employees making over $100,000. Now, for the purposes of the loan, I can only $100,000 per employee, no more than that.
Right, right.
Okay, but when I'm making, when I'm doing payroll, and I've got to be able to pay these people only $100,000, I need to pay them what they're currently making.
Yes.
How do I do that? Can, and without, without jeopardizing the forgiveness clause?
So, so, so when you apply for, for loan forgiveness, anything that you pay to the employee, so it will be on an annualized basis calculation. So whatever payment you have done in those is hundred fifty thousand dollars in a year, hundred fifty thousand dollars in a year. That comes to around roughly, let's say, 12,000 per month, right? Give and take. It should be 13,000, but then you are allowed to give $9,000 analyzed over a year of, of capped at $100,000. So $3,000 extra money you're paying every week, every month for two months, so that will be $6,000. Now, you are allowed only up to $100,000. So that extra 6,000 will not be counted. If you made payment of, of, to that employee, 6,000 of those payment will not be counted on the loan forgiveness when they, when they compute those percentages.
So is it possible for me to pay up to 100, up to the, the maximum using the, the PPP and then use another fund to make up the difference of a person's salary?
They are going to use the 941s and they are going to use all those documents required to do the forgiveness. So I will not suggest to do that. That way, maybe you can talk with the employer and say they find out that it's not, the PPP is given to a business because EIN number is not given to like, that is not given to different business, one business, running payroll. So so even if you have multiple accounts, does not qualify for it. So yes, it has to be done properly and reasonably well.
So that, that redates a lot of the value of the program if I have a highly compensated employees.
Right, if you're highly compensated employees, the loan forgiveness will be, you will get lower loan forgiveness. It's not that you not get it all, but if you cap it at 100,000, extra money will not be counted towards the loan forgiveness.
Because obviously I cannot pay these people less than they're making and expect them to stay around.
Maybe you can, you can pay that, you can have, you can distribute income, but then the spending is required and then, yes, you have to look at it. If you talk to CP and see, find out base.
What I wanted to, what I wanted to do was to set up an account and put all this money in that account and use it strictly for, you know, payroll, for rent and for medical, medical benefits.
Yeah, so one thing I have to tell all the people.
I keep it segregated from the rest of my, my business.
Yes, yes. So just want to let all the, everyone know that what your money you're going to get from PPP, make it, put it in a separate account of the company. Don't mix it with your regular business account. Keep it separate. Try to make payments for payroll, rent and utilities from that account so that when you send it, send the document to the, to the lender, they will have clear picture of loan forgiveness. And when you file a return and in case of any audit or notices from IRS, it's very easy to prove it.
But, but what you're telling me is that I could not issue a person two paychecks, one from that account and another paycheck from a.
You can have a separate company and look, look into possibility of planning that way.
I see. And I was to set up another company just, just to make up the difference.
Right.
Okay, that's kind of an interesting maneuver. Okay, appreciate that advice.
Thank you.
Gives me something to think about.
It's great. Let's go to Preeti. Where's the rent question? Preeti, you still there? So Preeti has a question. If I pay my rent now, then will be, then will it be considered under PPP or EID?
So if you paid a rent now, is, the rent will not be considered under PPP because the loan has not been and that it's going to pay a rent soon. Talk to your landlord and tell them to hold on those payments till you get the money from the PPP account.
Good. Any other questions before we wrap up this call?
Um, this is Vidya here. I have a question.
Yes, go ahead Vidya.
Um, so I, I provide consultancy services and I've been a contractor on 1099, but of course being the situation world is the work that we are getting is much lesser than what we are doing because I'm losing income on that. So I have an option in the future of thinking if I want to go as, on a W2 employee, like work for a company instead of doing my independent consultancy business. So if I decide to look in the later part of the year, that that might be a better option for me, would that have any impact on the CIDL or PPP that I've already applied?
So one thing you have to understand, one should understand, this is a loan. The loan forgiveness is there if you prove it. If it is, if it don't.
Like, let's say for those eight weeks.
Yeah, go ahead Vidya.
I was saying for those eight weeks, you know, let's say.
Again, if you're okay with eight weeks, it's.
Okay, we, we have some bandwidth issues. I'm so sorry. Vidya, can you please repeat your question?
I was saying, you know, let's say in the month of October later this year, like I'm still unemployed and I'm still kind of on 1099 through June, those eight weeks when I get those, those money, but will the IRS then come back and say, hey, later part of the year you did W2, we cannot consider you for forgiveness?
Yes, so if, if you can prove it that the contract was till June, then it's, then it's okay. If you, if, yeah, you should have some documentation to prove. That's what, that's all what.
Got it. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions that we can run through?
Yes, one more question.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Sanjeev, one more question is that now, now given that my wife Neeni, her, her income was, was lower back in 2018, but her income is now higher back in 2019. So does it matter which year we use when we apply for PPP?
No, no, you, you should have 2019. They're looking at the latest data for 2019. So if you have any higher income, it's capped at $100,000.
I see, I see. Got it. Okay. Now, another one last question is that you mentioned earlier for sole proprietor, it's best to go with EIDL and not PPP. Can you, am I hearing that correctly? And if so, can you clarify a bit more why, why that's the case?
No, I go, no, if no, no. So if you, if you have a, so if you're a sole proprietor and if your income less than 100,000, you can go under PPP. There's nothing wrong in it. EIDL is good if you have higher, if you have high income and if you have a lot of working capital expenses. So that way you can go under EIDL. But PPP, if you have a, if, so I will use PPP if my income levels, that profit is less than 100,000 to get the maximum. If my income is very high and my cost is also very high, I will use the EIDL, but I will also apply under PPP and I will get lower forgiveness. That's okay, but still I will use, I can use both.
So, so I guess it's okay at this stage to apply for both and see which one gets approved, right?
Yes, yes. It's better to apply under both and see which one comes back. And again, it's, it's done by SBA. It's not that you can use both of them. One is getting finance into other. That's how it works. It's going to work out at the end.
I see, got it. Okay, okay. Thank you so much. I really appreciate your help. Thank you.
Good. Any other questions? Any other final questions? So we will meet again at 6:30 PM on Wednesday evening. So if you would like to circle back and bring any other follow-on questions, you're welcome to do that. And we are down to just a few. So many of you decided to stay back. Appreciate you staying on. And any other final questions before we wrap this up? Sanjeev, would you please project your slide which has your contact information? If you can please share that? Oh, yeah, you are not on your laptop. So it's still there in the video. The video will be posted on YouTube. So you can. At the YouTube and Samir, you want to give out your phone number? Sanjeev, you want to give it, give out your phone number?
Yes, my phone number is 510, that's my 510 4825757995294. If any of you have any questions on the application, application is not tough, but the amount calculated is going to be, is going to be a little confusing. But like I said, it should be, the PPP program is based on the 941 life in two of the 941s. Take debt amount and then back any retirement plans and required retirement plans and any payment for employer and any compensation made over 100,000, you have to minus that out. That amount, that calculation is simple. And you have to attach those documents. But if you have any, any questions on those one or you want any support or any help and you're not able to file online or you need some other vendors, some other lenders are there, small lenders, then connect with me. Again, my phone number is 6507995294. That's my cell phone number. My office number is 5108257563. And my website is sanjivcpa.com, S A N J I V CPA dot com. And I'm going to do a webinar very soon on April 11th. It's a two-hour webinar. You can register on my website. It will be more detailed webinar. I do it every month. So it will more detail and will have a lot of clarity, a lot of things. And you can, we can, we can, you can ask questions through chat window and we can take it, you can have more clarity that day.
So just to repeat, it's sanjivcpa.com. It's S A N J I V CPA dot com. And his phone number is 6507995294. That's 6507995294. On April 11th, Sanjeev is running a webinar. So Sanjeev, once again, thank you so much. This was very informative. You had lots of great content in terms of what you presented and also you were very thorough with all your responses. So we really appreciate that. And my apologies to everybody with all the network glitches that we had today. Thank you for holding your patience with this. We got through. I think we got a lot of questions answered. And let's do it again Wednesday evening at 6:30 PM. Hopefully we'll see some of you back. So thank you. I know some of the folks are here for the next call, but we'll have to stop this recording. Okay, we can all stay on here. If you just stop the recording, that should be fine.